Well.
No, huh?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Great to see such a crowd. So I'd like to open this meeting and the first topic is public input. Yes?
So just something really quick. I saw in the paper there was a discussion of the kindergarten funding for next year. And I just want to make it clear that the funding is not determined upon if Littleton chooses to put Keno on the ballot or even votes on Keno either up or down. So you're gonna get the funding no matter what, eleven hundred dollars per person.
It's up to the town to put it on their ballot, not up to us.
Correct, but it has nothing to do with whether the town puts it on the ballot or the town votes on it or not. You get the funding no matter what.
Right, I saw it.
Even if the town votes for it, schools will get the funding.
I think the reason towns want to put Kenos on their ballot is so that businesses in the town can have a Keno, whatever it is, in their business.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah. All right. So if there's no further public input, we'll see Mrs. Janice Baron and her fourth grade students.
So I'm Janice Baron. I teach over at Lakeway, I'm a fourth grade teacher there, and I have some students. They had eight, but we have three today, so they're all, so we're down to five. Can you come up, please, and you can stand basically? So one would be here, please, yeah. Nice job. So the students have been working on the social study competency, which is just the state of nature. That's the whole competency for social studies. And in this particular, they really try to make things really authentic for the kids. So the students wrote books. We really would like them to read to an audience. And the book is based on New Hampshire. We're still working on, we finished Friday, on New Hampshire products, right? We're gonna be working on rivers and different things, and the history, Albinaki, Indians, I have a friend who's gonna come in. And eventually, what we're gonna do is one class book that they all put together. We're gonna do one class book, and we really wanna get published. And we're hoping to get that published and then put into gift shop, so the gift shop at the trick, and gift shops at Hampton Beach, and gift shops around. So that's our culminating activity. So that's what our goal is and what we're aiming for. In here, the students did a lot of computer technology standards as well. They used different colored fonts, they chose their font, they went on the internet, they got inserted pictures from the internet, they did, they shared their books with others in the classroom. So there was a lot of different technology standards and competencies they were working on, and writing. We want them just to have a variety of different writing experiences. So we are going to start here. The thing I do wanna mention is, it was around Christmas time, and I love the 12 days of Christmas, so we have them do the 12 days of New Hampshire. And so each book is, it's gonna sound weird because she's gonna read her page 1, 2, 3, 4, and then he's gonna read 5, 6, so it's not gonna be 1, 2, 3. So I'd like to let you know that they each have their own, and so it might sound a little different because you're not hearing one full. If we did that, we'd be here very late, and I know you're very busy, so go ahead, take it away, guys.
On the first day of New Hampshire, the old man gave to me Lake Winnipesaukee. On the second day of New Hampshire, the old man gave to me two granite stones and Lake Winnipesaukee. On the third day of New Hampshire, the old man gave to me three purple finches, two granite stones, and Lake Winnipesaukee.
On the fourth day of New Hampshire, Yamaha gave to me four snowmobiles, three trams traveling, two hunters hunting, and Lake Winnipesaukee. On the fifth day of New Hampshire, Bretton Woods gave to me five skiers skiing, four snowmobiles, three trams traveling, two hunters hunting, and Lake Winnipesaukee. On the sixth day of New Hampshire, hunters gave to me six white-tailed deers, five skiers skiing, four snowmobiles, three trams traveling, two hunters hunting, and Lake Winnipesaukee.
On the seventh day of New Hampshire, the old man gave to me seven children skating, six white-tailed deer, five trams traveling, four granite stones, three moose in the road, two lilac trees, and Lake Winnipesaukee. On the eighth day of New Hampshire, poet Robert Frost gave to me eight poems, seven children skating, six white-tailed deer, five trams traveling, four granite stones, three moose in the road, two lilac trees, and Lake Winnipesaukee. And this is one of his poems, "Dust of Snow." The way a crow shook down on me, the dust up from a hemlock tree, has given my heart a change of mood and saved some part of a day of old.
On the ninth day of New Hampshire, the old man gave to me nine lilac trees, eight farmers farming, seven hunters hunting, six skiers skiing, five hockey sticks, four dancers dancing, three hikers hiking, two Pauleys pancakes, and one Lake Winnipesaukee. On the tenth day of New Hampshire, the old man gave to me ten purple finches, nine lilac trees, eight farmers farming, seven hunters hunting, six skiers skiing, five hockey sticks, four dancers dancing, three hikers hiking, two Pauleys pancakes, and one Lake Winnipesaukee.
On the eleventh day of New Hampshire, a conductor gave to me eleven cogs railways, ten black bears, nine ladybugs, eight birch trees, seven Hampton beaches, six skiers skiing, five purple finches, four lilac trees, three Pauleys pancakes, two white-tailed deer, and the old man on the mountain. On the twelfth day of New Hampshire, a swimmer gave to me twelve Lake Winnipesaukees, eleven cogs railways, ten black bears, nine ladybugs, eight cut-down birch trees, seven Hampton beaches, six skiers skiing, five purple finches, four lilac trees, three Pauleys pancakes, two white-tailed deer, and the old man on the mountain.
So, ladies and gentlemen, with that being said, we'll start with you. What is your name?
Kendall Adams.
I'm Ruth Cunney.
I'm Amy McDonald.
I'm Ella Horst.
I'm Claudia Canuda.
Thank you. You're great. Great job. And yeah, I love the pictures. It's good.
Can't wait to see them.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Mrs. Baron.
They're adults, we're here, though.
Good voices. She's really a job talker.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Really good voices.
Good job.
You're welcome.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Maybe the next day. Is he here or is he out?
Pressure's on.
You got a deadline now.
You did a great job. So the next item on the agenda is two minutes of January 8th. So move. You hear a second?
Second.
Any corrections during this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the January 16th School Board and Town Budget Committee meeting. So moved. Second. Any errors or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the January 16th School Board and Town Budget Committee meeting. So moved. Second. Any errors or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The manifest is going around. So treasurer's report is next.
Okay. You'll have a copy of it. It's pretty self-explanatory. There's nothing outstanding, okay? Everything balances out perfect. As you can see, the two bottom lines are correct, and that's the report for the month of December.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I don't think so. Tom, do you want the current budget update that you've been providing?
I believe it's time to try, but also I gave out some paper copies of some December information. The wide page, which may be on the back, is year-to-date December versus budget, which we know is always weasele a lot this time of year. It is showing actually spent and encumbered of fourteen and a half million dollars versus a budget of fifteen and seven. So we still have a ways to go. Again, this is only through December. The flip side of that is perhaps more telling. That's the report where we compare December, year-to-date December of this year to year-to-date December of last year. The big number there is $699,000 less than we spent last year. Most of that is right within the plan. We did reduce personnel, we did reduce the budget for this year, so we should be spending less than last year. Those items that have more than $50,000 variance, either plus or minus, are detailed a little bit in the center and the bottom sections. So as an example, you can see that generally added 1,100 was 492,818, less than last year, 361,000 of that is salaries, again, as expected. Take that and draw on it and make airplanes as you see fit, and feel free to drop me a line with any questions or comments.
Thank you. Mr. Barker is not here yet. Do you expect him to join in?
Yep. He should be here any minute.
Okay, so maybe we could skip down to the school calendar, which is a draft that nobody has looked at. And he's put in there the days that we're gonna have school board meetings, school vacation days, graduation day, I think it's the 180 student days, is that right?
Anything much different from the previous?
Not really.
No?
No. One staff development day was moved, but...
Yeah, we moved in June, and typically there'd been two staff development days at the end, there's just one that allowed us to move that over to January, which frankly would be much more productive time to do that than the end of the year.
With schools ending at the same time?
Yeah, pretty much, the calendar's pretty much the same.
The whole, anyway?
Uh-huh. Had to make a little adjustment just because of the shift in the days, but it's basically the same calendar. I think Steve.
Steve, has there been any discussion anywhere else in the state of going to a one-week during the spring rather than two, and either shorten the year or...
Yeah, I haven't heard much at the state level, or I know it's come up with North Country Superintendent a time or two, as well as before day, Labor Day after Labor Day as well, and that conversation's come up. To my knowledge, recently, I haven't heard anything around changing the two-week holidays or week-long, right to the, yeah, haven't everything to do about that, or anybody doing that.
I think if that were to be done, because we have sending districts coming to us...
It would have to be coordinated.
They'd all have to get it together.
And I also don't think it's something that you could potentially change for next year due to, I'm sure there's sports schedules that are already out there, there's, you know, along with the sending issue, that we might have to look at that being something that you set as a project, and, you know, a two- or three-year project line out, be able to make that switch. But I agree with you, it's gotta do something with that. Littlest district can't be the only district to do it when you've got sending districts coming to the CTC center, because that would cause quite a disruption.
So do you want to include this calendar tonight, or do you wanna wait till the next meeting, or I'll make sure it's okay, or what's your pleasure?
I'm okay with it. I'll take the add as a bonus.
Okay. Yeah, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Good. All right, so shall we, someone make a motion that we accept the 2018-19 school calendar?
I vote that we accept the Littleton School District's 2018-19 school calendar for the second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Maybe Mr. Barker is soon to be here?
He's, I mean, he's like walking down that hill.
Okay, well, we must wait for him for his presentation.
He'll take a minute or two, say, off two probably, but he's, we'll be here pretty well.
Who else is here? Put somebody forward.
Kelly's the first one on.
Go, Kelly.
Did you have any questions about the parent surveys? Any? Yeah, unfortunately, we don't get a lot of responses, but we're not held to compliance regarding how many parents turn that in. That's not one of the indicators that we're held to compliance on, so...
Were you surprised by the...
Nope, those are typical. Yeah. It's kind of consistent.
Okay. Gentlemen, this might be a little long.
Yeah, no, I won't go through my whole report unless I'm...
I don't know why she says that.
So the one thing that I wanted to, well, we've got, we did finish our NEASK surveys, the surveys and the reforming, the self-reflection, so that's a good thing. We have about 82 families to respond, and vast majority of our students and all our staff. So we'll be moving on that. The one element in my report I wanted to talk about specifically is the Learn program. The Learn program is, right currently, that after-school, three-hour programs are all available, the program is all online. We're hoping to explore the shifting that to, shifting some of those students to the day program, 12 to 3, and offering that model during the school day where they have counselors and administrators and food available to them. So we'll be looking at that shift.
Can you, how many students?
We have 11 students in the program, and we're hoping to split them in half so that we can better meet the needs in both spaces. Though we're looking at this for the remainder of this year. It'll differ a little for next year.
So I had a discussion with Greg and Jen, and I was wondering if the board would have a work session next Monday so they can go further in depth into this program? It probably wouldn't take, I'm guessing, an hour. At 5:00.
And in the meantime, are you looking at maybe that shift?
Yeah.
For three hours, three and a half, four hours during the day?
At what time are you thinking? I was gonna have the work session at 5:00, because I know Greg and Jen, you know...
You probably need that work.
Okay, so what you do?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So we'll have about an hour work session next Monday discussing this program. So where?
Here.
Yes, I use... So let me just post that pattern, please. I think we need to do some setup, because people are going in.
Unless I have a different report, which I just printed, just a comment, I don't think this is a current report, which is very similar to December.
I thought the same thing. I heard the same thing. Every single, like, one of them.
Identical. Because we haven't seen Mr. and Mrs. Claus before. So I must have somehow sent you the wrong one, so I'll just resend it.
So I tried to help you, I changed the date on it.
Yeah, I know. But that's not the one. I sent it forward to you, so I sent one to you, just a little chat to send it, so something got across wire there, so...
Yeah, I was thinking I read this.
Yeah, it looks like it's a big date all over here.
I thought you took the...
From the CTC center. The report.
Well, he's busy, so...
Nothing too exciting in mind. I did wanna mention that math night is this Thursday. I think we have 170 people signed up to come already.
Wow.
Steph Wyman did our last faculty meeting and presented some math games and math activities that people can do at home, and do with their students, and sort of, you know, prepared us for what activities will be happening Thursday, since it's like way to purchasing pizzas, and some have been donated. So we're gonna feed everybody that comes, and there'll be about 20 different math games, and every family will leave with a deck of cards and a list of activities and games they can do with those cards. So that's pretty exciting, so if you're out and about and gonna do some math games...
The same nights are screen...
Yeah, that's right. The same night, the screen, screen?
Screen.
Is that 6:30 at high school?
Yeah.
Or at least 7 to 9, parents or anybody that wants to go?
Yes.
Is that gonna be filmed?
I don't know, I don't think I can...
Probably not for the copyright.
Because of the copyrighting.
I see.
Maybe the discussion, but not the film itself.
Oh, okay.
So just while you're setting up, you noticed in my old report, there was a Region 3 advisory meeting in December. I'll just let you know, we did meet again last week with all the area guidance counselors. And Greg mentioned calendar, we did talk a little bit about calendar, but primarily talking about recruitment, promotion of CTE, and most schools are having their students scheduled for next year, courses for next year, in February. So February, we'll be out visiting schools, schools will be visiting us. So that's, I think, a little soon, and then in the past years. So the meeting's very timely. All guys counselors were there, which was really nice to work together.
Yeah, important.
Very important.
Screen ages can be downloaded, and it's on Netflix.
It isn't on Netflix.
That's what they're saying.
Interesting.
Such a racket.
It would be better to see it at the high school.
Well, it's a discussion, it's a discussion. And there'll be cookies.
Basically.
No pizza.
Say no more.
There are cookies up here.
She'll...
This one's gonna zoom in on that, but I shouldn't miss all of you, don't worry.
Should we share the light?
Well, I think some of them are...
Well, we're...
Or nothing. But maybe that's better.
Better than my eyes. I'm serious. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, yes.
Kyle Barker, Lawrence, architects. Was contacted to look at the Lakeway School for deficiencies and just overall health and building. You know, one of the things I wanted to say right in front was having a job description like that, sometimes I might say stuff that makes the building look bad, but that's kind of what I need to do in order for everyone to know what these issues are. So I don't want anybody to take offense if I'm looking at a picture that shows a lot of clutter in the classroom, it doesn't mean I think the teachers are bad, or that the custodian staff doesn't take care of the building well. The fact is, the building's in there.
Means they're working.
Yeah, means they're working. The building's been functioning for a number of years, for many years, and I'm sure that the community has a lot of history and affection for the building, so I don't want in any way to cross it as cutting it down. When it comes to situations like code issues, I particularly don't want to offend the fire chief or the building inspector or any in-town officials. But the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, this building was built under a different set of codes than what we currently look at. And so I take an opportunity to take a step back and look at it holistically and say, hey, what's working, what isn't? I think it's a chance for everybody in the community to understand how different this building is than it would be for, say, us to build a brand-new building, and what those differences are. So I guess with that sort of disclaimer right in front, thanks for having me here. Is there, if, we'll stop for questions along the way, so don't feel hesitant to ask questions. And if you folks wanna know anything about me or Warren Street Architects, let me know. I'm assuming things I'm already here that in some ways accepted to come and present. So with that, unless somebody has a question, we'll get into what some of the findings are. At least, I wanna start with how I approach a study. And I don't simply tour the building and take a lot of pictures and then make comments on that. I start with looking at the data that's provided in the drawings and things such as the enrollment projections. I haven't had a chance to really dive through those yet too much, but I've already started thinking about the building in terms of the mathematics that goes behind it. Students don't come in neat little packages of 25, that you put in a classroom one year and then move to the next classroom the next year. They come sometimes 10 or 15, and sometimes 30 or 35, and, you know, one year's first grade at 75 can end up being 45, the second grade the next year could be 100. It changes every year, and it changes back and forth. And so what I find is that it's helpful for me to know this so I can adequately predict where the push points in the building is gonna be. Take an example, if you've got a very small first grade, and they go to the cafeteria, they're gonna be very comfortable as a group in that cafeteria. But if you have a very large fourth grade, they could go to the same space the next period and feel very uncomfortable because there's so many more of them. So when I look at a building and say, this room is too big or too small, I'm looking at it with a lens of what's the biggest cohort that's gonna go through that space, not simply what the total, what the average is, I'm looking at the biggest. And I'm thinking about how these students progress through the grades, and when they do, what are they gonna hit and what's gonna fail at first. So essentially, what we've got here is three worksheets that I've worked up. The first one simply analyzes what you currently has and comes up with a figure of what I see would easily fit within this building. So I know from the enrollments, you're somewhere around 600? I can't remember exactly, but...
For that building, 376.
376. The number of classrooms you have is actually pretty specific. They're large classrooms, they're nine-to-square-foot rooms, and you've got a number of them. So your classroom capacity, your educational capacity is actually rather high in this building. On the other hand, your gymnasium's much smaller than what the state would like to see for a gymnasium. The cafeteria is a little bit smaller. The library is in a portable, and for the purpose of this study, I am not considering the portable a building. It's a temporary building, so therefore, it's not part of the study at all. So for my study, you don't have a library, so your square foot there is zero. So obviously, you're deficient on the library side. Music and art, you know, roughly okay, music's a little small, art's a little bit on the bigger side, and offices seem to be okay. But when you look at the aggregate of all of that, what I'm seeing is that your educational side of your spaces is adequate, if not... And, you know, one year's first grade at 75 can end up being 45, the second grade the next year could be 100. It changes every year and it changes back and forth. And so what I find is that it's helpful for me to know this, so I can adequately predict where the push points in the building is gonna be. Take an example, if you've got a very small first grade and they go to the cafeteria, they're gonna be very comfortable as a group in that cafeteria. But if you have a very large fourth grade, they could go to the same space the next period and feel very uncomfortable because there's so many more of them. So when I look at a building and say, this room is too big or too small, I'm looking at it with a lens of what's the biggest cohort that's gonna go through that space. Not simply what the total, what the average is, I'm looking at the biggest. And I'm thinking about how these students progress through the grades and when they do, what are they gonna hit and what's gonna fail at first. So essentially, what we've got here is three worksheets that I've worked up. The first one simply analyzes what you currently has and comes up with a figure of what I see would easily fit within this building. So I know from the enrollments, you're somewhere around 600, I can't remember exactly, but.
For that building, 376.
376. Here, the number of classrooms you have is actually pretty specific, they're large classrooms, they're nine square foot rooms, and you've got a number of them. So your classroom capacity, your educational capacity is actually rather high in this building. On the other hand, your gymnasium's much smaller than what the state would like to see for a gymnasium. The cafeteria is a little bit smaller. The library is in a portable, and for the purpose of this study, I am not considering the portable a building. It's a temporary building, so therefore it's not part of the study at all. So for my study, you don't have a library, so your square foot there is zero. So obviously, you're deficient on the library side. Music and art, you know, roughly okay, music's a little small, arts a little bit on the bigger side. And offices seem to be okay, but when you look at the aggregate of all of that, what I'm seeing is that your educational side of your spaces is adequate, if not more than adequate. Your core facility side is undersized by almost 50%. So the next worksheet that I have here is a, what I call a Castellini diagram. Basically, what it does is it takes each grade, figures out what the average student load is, and then moves them through classes, so that way we can determine a number of teaching spaces required. It also applies a utilization factor. So at elementary school level, that utilization factor's pretty high, it's like 90%. And say, high school will be pretty low, like 60 to 75%. Anyways, the point of this is trying to make sure that the numbers of classrooms that you have are balanced. If you're looking to limit your class size in first and second grade to like 18 students and in the fourth and fifth grade, you're gonna have a different number of classrooms in both those same levels. So looking at the plans, I already know that you already do that, and I can see that that seems to fit in pretty well actually with this formula. Again, where it kind of breaks down is when we get into core facilities. This last worksheet then takes what we know we should have and compares it new versus existing and comes up with a function of what space needs is in the building. So this is without even looking at the plans, we start to get sense already because we know we've got portable classrooms, we know that the core facility's too small, we have a sense of where some of those push points are. Any questions on that? I guess what I find that's important behind these worksheets is that this is just simply math. I'm not editorializing this, it's simply a formula of going from the number of students you have through the system to come up with a figure at the end. So when we go to public meetings, again, it's not editorialized, we can show that we've done the work, to show the data on what space needs is for this building. So I've got a few different floor plans that we've worked up. This first one, I'm calling a diagram of uses, and essentially shows by color coding the difference between the educational components and the core facilities. So education is in green, core facilities is pretty much everything else. And from what you can see, there's a lot of green, there's a lot of classrooms. And what you can see is there's not a lot of the other spaces. There's some good things and bad things about this. You know, first of all, the front entrance, when I first visited the school, I had a little bit of a hard time figuring out where the front entrance was. The, this space up here looked like a front entrance. This over here could have looked like a front entrance, but really the front entrance was down over here. And that makes some sense because when you look at it, the main office space is in that part of the building right there. That's good that the main office is off the front entrance, but what's bad is it's very isolated from the rest of the building. The next thing that I noticed is that the core facilities, you know, that your assembly spaces, your kitchen, cafeteria, and gym are sort of in the middle of the building. There's a door that can be closed over here, but essentially, this whole wing of the building is open to whatever function is happening in the gym after hours. So it seemed to me, without having too many discussions with the staff, that it was gonna be difficult to close this building off for safety purposes. Say you have voting day and there's voting going on in the gymnasium, but you've got classes going on, that means adults and kids are crossing each other, and that's not a good thing to happen. And I noticed that, you know, on the good side of things, you've got the kindergarten sort of separated off into this end of the wing, and I'm sure that you probably use the side door as an exit and entrance for parent pickup in the middle of the day. That wing though, has its own unusual things that I'll get to in the next slide. Any questions on how the building's split up into uses? Does that make sense? If I start, you know, when I get in a big group and I start talking really fast, I tend to like, you know, leave some people behind, so just slow me down if you feel like you're a little confused by what I'm presenting. This is a code diagram, so I studied the building for building and life safety code, mostly life safety code. For a school to be approved to be used as a school, it needs to meet life safety code. Life safety code has two chapters relating to education. One is for new educational buildings and one's for existing educational buildings. So some people say, well, you know, we don't have to fix that because it's grandfathered. And the fact is, it's not. It still has to meet the existing section of the life safety code. Every building does, no matter what, all the time. So there are a few things here that are questionable. We'll start with the kindergartens. Zoom in a little bit. It's sort of an unusual design, this horseshoe shape. Makes some unique classrooms, which is okay. But from a code standpoint, there's a couple of these rooms, particularly this one at the end. This one up here, it's over 1,000 square feet, which means it needs two doors out of it. It does have two doors out of it, the problem is they're right next to each other. So it essentially only has one. So that classroom needs another door out. You start to work your way around to this classroom, and this classroom, and this classroom, and they all have the same interconnecting doors with other classrooms, but not two ways out onto the corridor. The way the code reads, you can have the doors onto the same corridor, but they need to lead in opposite directions. And if you look at these doors, they all bring you right back to the same place. So in my mind, all these classrooms, at least two out of the four of them should have doors directly to the outside. So that way, there's clearly a second means of egress in an opposite direction. The next thing that kind of bothered me is the second floor. It's not a, I don't want to make it sound unsafe. It is safe, it's been there for a very long time, but the code requires the stairs to be designed to a certain size to accommodate the anticipated number of people going through the building. And there's these huge formulas that we go through, and some people might look at it and say, well, we'll never have 45 students in that particular classroom, but the code looks at it in terms of what could possibly go in there, not how you're actually gonna use it. So another reason why I'm saying, it's safe because you're always gonna put less in there than what the code's requiring. But right now, as the code reads, you need a third stair out of the second floor. That's not a small thing. You know, you're talking $500,000 to $600,000 to put in a stair. You're talking about losing space in order to the corridor. But today's standards, we would not build this many classrooms with stairs that are that narrow. The stairs themselves, you know, again, they're predate the current codes. They're too tall, they're too steep, the handrails don't meet current code. There's a lot of handicap issues around that too as well. So I have some concerns about that second floor in terms of the code issues. So we've got a whole list of similar things that we go through, I just wanted to highlight the the most significant things that I've seen here. Any questions on the code page?
No.
This last one, this last floor plan slide on diagram deficiencies. What we're doing, you'll see a list in the middle here, I'll show you the list in more detail in a minute. There's basically 70 items that I've come up with. Some of them are as small as, alright, we need to take $1,000 to fix this. Some of them are like the stairs where it's more like $500,000 to fix this. So I don't want you to think that each and every one of these is huge numbers, but, you know, you'll see the total in the end. So what I'm intending to do is to take each and every one of these and actually tag them on the floor plan. So that way, when you get the final report and somebody says, I don't believe it when you say that that door needs to be replaced, you pull out the plan, see the tag, go to the sheet that it's talking about, and, you know, be able to prove to that person, constituent or, you know, public member, you know, what's going on. Alright. This is that list of deficiencies. I know you're not gonna be able to read it here. I just sort of wanted to prove that it existed. I do have a copy of it with me. We can go through it in detail at some point, I'm a little concerned that tonight we might run short on time, so I want to be somewhat abbreviated. Again, let me hit the really important stuff. Sorry, do you want to pull up my list? And my notes.
Do you need the light on? Right behind you, I mean the switch.
Yeah, let's turn this on for a minute.
Whoa.
Sorry.
You can't see that.
Eyes adjusted. Basically, after this is gonna be just a bunch of pictures that go along with these. It's not meant to be completely comprehensive, but rather just give you a sense of how it feels essentially. There will be a quiz afterwards, so notes is fine. What I'm hoping to do too is to make another trip up here that we can refine some of this list. I'll be looking at things and saying, I just don't know. And, you know, hoping maybe we can have another session with the staff to hammer out some of these things. And maybe even a session where we can get some input from either the public and/or the school board. I may be an expert on code issues and on building products, but I'm not an expert on the little things, so I kind of need some help in navigating the waters when it comes to some of these items. The first section, I've broken this down into sections that correspond with life safety code and the educational guidelines that the state produces. What is ED 321 or something like that? So the first thing, first area of interest is the site. And a lot of what I have on here is blank, and the reason being, two reasons being, that A, it was a foot and a half's of snow that fell the day before I got here, and I wasn't able to actually look at some of this stuff. And the second thing is, is that some of these issues are so broad, I can't come up with a solution. I can't make the site five acres bigger. I can't find more parking on the site without, you know, a lot more effort, those type of things. So starting off, minimum lot size, state requires five acres for an elementary school plus one acre for every 100 students. So you really should have a acre here, and from one end stands about five. So you're undersized for the site to begin with. I don't have a monetary offset to that because how do you increase the lot size? You're already sort of trapped in, boxed in on at least three sides by roads and other properties. And the backside's a fairly large hill, so how do you increase the size of the property, I don't know, and I can't really put a value to that. Water and septic seem to be fine here, connected to the municipal water and sewer. There is a section, Dale helped me on from Ron, of clay pipe, this sort of building that probably needs to get replaced at some point in the future. This is not huge, it's just something that needs to be done. Bus and car separation, I was here on vacation day, so I didn't see how things maneuvered around, but it was hard for me to really picture it happening really well because there was parking and a loop. And from what I understood, that the parent pickup and drive-off is essentially in the street. So these are all things that the Department of Education would be really upset about if they were asked if this was okay. Again, how do you put a value to that? I can't create more land to put the driveway on, so we can't create a separate parent pickup zone. So that's something that, we need to work out, how do we represent this in some way as a value so that it's fair to compare that versus any other options. Playgrounds and playfields, I didn't, I couldn't expect it because it was, just the conditions of the day were not good. I do believe you've got playfields that use from the town, that's not connected properly.
Yes, all of our fields are town-owned.
Alright, all your fields are town-owned?
Yep.
Again, it's kind of hard to put a value to that, it'd be nice to have them on-site. Grading and drainage, again, was not something I could really study at this point in time, but again, we know that there's a space needs issue because you have four of them. Once you start putting additions in the building, grading and drainage could become an issue. And having space on-site to be able to handle that, you can't add and run off of the property. So you have to treat it on-site, you need space to be able to do that. Last thing on here was the oil tank, age and condition, and I believe Dale, we talked about it being about 10 years old. So it's not a problem right now, 10 years from now, you'll have to be inspecting it probably like every year. And so the older it gets, the more issues it becomes, just something to keep in mind. The next area of study is the building envelope. So I look at the roof, the walls, the doors, the windows, and the foundation. Couldn't look at the foundation because it was covered in snow, I could see it from the inside, won't crawl in the basement. The roof, from what I understand, there's been a lot of repairs over the past few years. When I walked around on the inside of the building though, there wasn't many rooms that didn't have water damage. So I'd like to know a little bit more about the condition of the roof. I'm making some assumptions that wholesale parts of that really just need to be replaced.
I think we've had some infrared studies, but was it done on the whole building in Wyman?
It was in 2015.
Yeah, but did they do the whole building?
Yes.
So we do have some infrared studies, 2015. I thought they were supposed to be updated every couple of years.
Every three is what was asking.
I guess the story that I'm hearing is that it's sort of an ongoing maintenance issue. You know, at some point, you know, again, when you're looking at options, do you replace smaller pieces at a time or just at some point just tackle the whole wall? I'm just raising the question, not trying to answer it. The wall condition. There are wholesale parts of the building that have no insulation. There are wholesale parts of the building that the wood siding is in bad shape, to the point of failure. So there's a lot of concern about the wall condition. The doors, I didn't find anything hugely important other than just routine maintenance, weather stripping, things of that nature. The windows, another big concern, we've got, you know, steel, single-pane windows. They are many years past their expected lifespan. The classrooms have what was typical back in the 50s, the glass block tops with the steel windows down below. The glass block has been covered over by the wood siding. Kind of makes some sense, what we've learned since studying those buildings in other places is that in the 50s, they thought more glass was better because it's more light, natural light in the classrooms are better. And what we're understanding now is, it's not just the amount of light, it's the type of light, the quality of light. If you have a ton of windows down low, a ribbon window, I call them in the classrooms, it creates glare near the windows, and when you get to the opposite side, it's rather dark. So the current style of design of those windows is actually counter to a good setting for education. Typically, what we do now in a new school would be to have tall windows. With transom windows up near the ceiling that can bounce the light off the ceiling and further into the building, into the room. So it's more diverse ambient light, not the ribbon window style that we've got here. And again, I didn't see any problems with the foundation from what I can see, but it's a little bit unknown at this point in time. I'd like to take another look at it when the weather permits. The next area of study is life safety code specific. Now, there's gonna be a little bit of redundancy. Sometimes, you know, if the life safety code's looking at the stairs, and I go to the building code and it's also looking at the stairs, you might hear me say the same thing twice. I've tried not to repeat myself too many times, but just wanted to point out that, you know, both of those things are things we need to be looking at. The areas here, you comply on most things, things like kindergarten first grade being on first level. You know, your panic devices, by and large seem to be up to date. You corridor width, except for one small corridor, the corridor that goes, go back to. Basically, this little corridor right here goes down to the elevator is too narrow. Which is kind of funny that it would be the elevator's corridor that you really want lined up for wheelchair to go down. Life safety code requires all corridors to be six feet or more in a school, and that's five feet. Life safety code requires all corridors to be six feet or more in a school, and that's five feet. Capacity of means of egress, exactly what I was talking about with the stairs, that we've calculated room by room, door by door, stairs by stairs. We've calculated all that and came up with a total figure that needs exit out of the building, and came up short on the stairs themselves. An item here, exit through intervening rooms. It's allowed by code, but what you can understand is that the classroom which the other classroom is exiting needs to be kept in the same manner as the corridor, which means no personal effects, means nothing in the way, means that there needs to be a path from the door of one classroom to the exit door of that classroom. Now, I don't think anybody can guarantee a teacher's not gonna move a desk or chair in the way. And so I don't feel comfortable seeing classrooms having a required means of eagerness through an adjoining classroom. We checked, I just got the engineer's final report on Friday and have not had a chance to sort through it, but some of these things, doesn't really take an engineer to look at and say, "Yeah, it's really old, needs to be replaced." The fire alarm system has some issues we need to deal with. You know, mechanical system, looking specifically for life safety stuff, there's a... Oh, yeah, you'll see in the pictures in a few minutes, that there's a few areas that are not fire-rated that should be. It's a concrete block building, which is good, obviously not combustible. But there's some areas in the corridors where there's some combustible material that's been built in, made little closets, things that have been stored. There's a section down in this way, down here, where they still have codes hanging in the corridor. That's specifically not allowed by code. The next area of study is building code specific. And the difference between life safety code and building code is, building code is grandfather. Once the building's built, you don't have to bring up to code unless you make renovations or additions. As soon as you touch it, anything you do new obviously has to meet code, but if you change the existing by more than 10%, you have to start bringing up to full code. So if we did, say, a major addition to this building, the whole building would have to come up to seismic code, which means adding embracing sheer walls, a lot of structural improvements. Based on the age of this building, and based on some reports that I've seen, I am fully confident that this building is not up to seismic code, and is probably underdesigned for snow loads. So it doesn't mean right now it's unsafe, or that you have to change it right now. It means that if there's any changes to this building in the future, all that has to get brought up to code. I guess another, sort of not, to go sideways for a second. The Department of Education encourages school districts to look at building new when their existing building renovations exceed 60% of the value of the building. If you exceed 60% of the value of the building, they want that renovation to bring it all up to new code standards. So that's above and beyond the building code, as I said. Department of Education, if, they wanna know that tax dollars are being spent in a wise fashion, and they don't feel that an existing building just patched together is a wise choice. So if you're gonna spend more than 60% of the value of the building on renovations, be prepared to bring everything up to current code standards.
That's a very powerful statement. That's, I almost wish you'd repeat the whole thing again loudly, but that's because we've been saying it for years. Obviously, the couple of us on the board have been around for a while, and we've talked about this school for a long time.
I'll bring the Department of Rules next time, so that way I can quote it just right.
Okay, great, thank you, thanks.
Let me check on that, and I'll get back to you. But yeah, they do, they, they have some pretty strict guidelines. Again, you know, back when they were funding construction projects, they felt very strongly, if their money's gonna be spent on a building, that it needs to be spent in a responsible way. When the moratorium on school funding happened, they, they didn't have as much to say. But, you know, if things change, which they supposedly are changing, that there's been a school that was funded, and they, every year, they say they're gonna bring it back. When that happens, they'll probably come back in vengeance in terms of reviewing these buildings. So I'm going back to the old standards and doing it the way that I've always done in the past. If you talk to the state today, or you might have some people argue, "Well, they're not funding it, why do we need to listen to them?" The rules are there for a reason, and I think they're worth following. The next area is structure. And I know there's been a couple of reports on the second floor of the building. And the reports that I read, I should read them again, but from what I gathered from them, they were saying that there's no evidence of failure. There's evidence of deflection. But deflection does not mean failure. I understand that it was a one-story building, at one point in time, the second floor was put on after the fact, and that was simply put on top of a wood deck that was part of the roof. From a structural and code issue, that wasn't a really good idea. You know, the wood is not meant to be a floor. It changes our classification of the building. From a masonry building, now I have to define it as a wood-framed building, because the floor is framed with wood. So because of that floor, the whole construction classification's changed. If they had taken the wood off and put a concrete deck, this would be a 2B construction, which is much more robust and has a lot more leeway in terms of the code and design. That being said, it doesn't seem to me that there's any threat of the building collapsing, but problems that you currently have of the bounciness, the deflection, the cracking in the floors, those aren't gonna go away, because it's just simply the character of a wood floor to deflect. It's very evident when you go upstairs and you look, and you can, you can trace the outline of every single piece of plywood that's on there. I've seen this in other schools, so I know exactly what this is. It's the plywood that was not. They didn't use adhesive, and the, they might have used nails instead of screws. And as the edges of the plywood, you know, you walk on it, it's wood underneath it. It stretches, it moves, and suddenly the edges of the plywood start to pop up. That pops through the vinyl top. The only way to fix it, repliwood the entire second floor, use adhesive, and use screws. It's not a small endeavor, and all it's gonna save is, you won't see the cracking top. Other than that, you know, like I said, there's certain things that we can assume. We know from the age of the building, it's not meant, it's not designed for seismic. People wonder, "Why do we design for seismic around here? There hasn't been any major earthquakes in hundreds of years." Well, this area is due for a major earthquake every 300 years. The last one was 350 years ago, so we do need to design for seismic. Accessibility. By and large, the building meets handicap accessibility. There's a few, few areas here and there. It doesn't seem like, it looks as though probably 20 years ago, somebody came through and did some maintenance and removed the knob hardware on all the classroom doors, but not on any of the closet doors. So when you go to a classroom, you can get in the classroom, but if you want to get in the closet, it's knob handles. There's a few other knob handles in other places that really shouldn't be there. So there's probably 30 or 40 handles that need to be replaced. There's a few other areas where things are in the way, that need to be moved out of the way. And there's a few areas where there used to be a door, the door got taken out. Now there's a threshold, and the threshold's too high. So a wheelchair hitting that would have a hard time getting over to the next. So it's just, it's not a big deal, but it adds up. It just adds up after a while. Indoor environmental quality. I've broadened this term quite a bit. Again, this has to do with the Department of Education. They started focusing on air quality, lighting quality, thermal quality control. If you're looking to the CHIPS, collaborative for high-performance schools, they have a lot of information on that. We don't mean to meet that level, but it's good to know what these issues are and why they're important. Ventilation, this, most classrooms have ventilation. It's mostly through unit ventilators. The Department of Education does not like unit ventilators. The new ones are good. The old ones are not so good. They're noisy, they're not cost-effective. There are a few areas that just don't have ventilation at all, or very poor ventilation. So the ventilation in general is a big issue that needs to be, needs to be addressed. Thermal control, the whole system is pneumatic controls. And one classroom might be 80 degrees, next class, 40 degrees. There's a serious lack of decent thermal control throughout the building. Moisture and mold issues, I did not come across too much. There's a little bit in the front entrance way that we talked about. I didn't, and I guess the other thing is just the staining in the ceiling concerns me. Water doesn't have coloring to it, so what makes the stain in the ceiling is actually mold. So if you see a stain in the ceiling, it's mold. It takes one droplet of water a day to maintain a mold calling. So if those stains happen, and then there's no more moisture, then the mold is stained the tile and then goes away. If it gets more water to it, it grows back again. So if this, and the other thing I noticed with the ceiling tiles is that a lot of pillowing, and that's evidence of a high moisture content in the air. So with those two things, I keep track and, and think about. I don't have a clear recommendation at this point on that, but just, it's something worth continuing to watch, to make sure it doesn't get any worse. Lighting quality. The, what I thought was interesting is that it seems as though the lights have been replaced, the ballast and the lamps have been replaced mostly throughout the building at some point in time, but it's still the original light fixtures in a lot of the areas. So we're talking lights that are 50 years old. The lenses are starting to yellow, there's a lot of cracking on it. And if they were replaced more than four or five years ago, they're, and this, this current sea change of technology, they're archaic. If they're more than five years old, they're archaic. The LED lights are so much better quality, and last so much longer, and use a fraction of the electricity.
The last change was PCBs.
Right.
So that's when the ballast was smoked out.
Right, right, with ballast. And then one of them went from, yeah, the TH to T5, to the TH. It seems like every five years, you get a new thing that comes out. LEDs seem to be the current trend. Is that gonna get replaced at some point? I don't know, but I can tell you that what you've got there right now is very archaic. The last thing on the indoor environmental quality is sanitation. There's, there's a lot of small janitor's closets throughout the building. But they're not fully enclosed. The chemicals need better storage. I literally went into one closet and saw a bag of sulfuric acid sitting on the counter, and the door was open. And I'll show you a picture coming up. This is not the fault of the janitor. This is the fault of the building not providing this correct space for this stuff to go into. Boiler condition. The boilers are all needed to be replaced. Again, not an engineer, but it was a pretty quick and easy thing to figure out. Plumbing. Fixer count, I need to check on still. There seems to be plenty of toilet fixtures throughout the building. The age, quality, however, is something to look at, particularly in the sinks that are in the classrooms. Main electric service, I need to get back to you on that. I need to study my engineer's report a little bit better to understand that. Power distribution. I noticed a lot of classrooms that, it looked like more outlets have been installed over the years, which is good. There's still a lot of power strips. I can see where some of that is just unavoidable. You've got smart boards that have three or four things plugged into them. There's a power strip right underneath it pretty much every time. Where I get concerned is where you see a power strip plugged into a power strip, plugged into another power strip. It shows that, you know, the building just hasn't kept up with technology. Another concern of mine is that walking through the building outside of the classrooms, a lot of the outlets that don't get used a lot have never been replaced. So they're the old brown outlets, they're, they're cracked, they're busted, some of the faceplate's really broken. I'd say this, this is, I have a strong suggestion to go through the entire building and basically replace all the outlets. If not, really look at the distribution system in general for upgrading. Building services. Phone and intercom, from what I understand, is very old and needs to be replaced. Not too much to add to that. Interiors. You might not think of, you know, carpet, ceiling tile, and whatnot as being really important, but when you think about it, if the carpet's old that you can't get the stains out, or that it's starting to get runs, the cleanliness goes down. You simply cannot clean it. Like, it's these, a certain age, you simply can't clean it. The cabinets, they, they need to be a material that's easy to wash. What we've got is not. And you can see that, you can see it in the pictures. The countertops are in rough shape. The walls definitely need to be painted. And the ceiling tiles, like I've already said, almost every classroom, they just, they all need to be replaced. So when you say, "All right, replacing ceiling tiles, you know, it's only like $4 or $5 for ceiling tile, times 50,000 square feet, you're talking $100,000." So with that said, I'm gonna get into some of the pictures. So what we're seeing here is the envelope that I was just talking about. Down here, you can see places where the siding is literally popping off. And that seemed to be pretty typical throughout. Up top here, you can see the glass block that's still in the walls. I don't know if there's insulation between the glass block and the siding, but it just seems like a very archaic system. And then these windows are the steel, single, you know, you can see in this picture as well, right there. They're only like an inch thick, and steel, so there's absolutely no insulation value to the window system at all. And that, that wall section here too, you can see that there's very little space between the brick. So there's, there's no insulation in that, in that particular wall whatsoever. And then the four smaller thumbnails just show random places in the building where the ceiling tiles have gotten wet. Lives, these are all life safety code issues. This first one, the upper left, shows codes in the corridor. That's not allowed. The glass, I, the, the look of the frosted glass, I'm, I didn't know how to test it. It needs to be tempered safety glass. It doesn't look like it. This is a door closer that belongs in a museum. And this is the closet. It's a, it's a wood-framed door with a wood frame and no trim, so you can actually see through it. And if you look up here, right in this spot, that's daylight coming in from over the top, so there's no ceiling to this. A storage closet, anything bigger than something that's just this big, needs to be fire-rated, so that the chemicals and the paper products inside, for where to catch fire, does not get into the corridor. This is not only not fire-rated, it's actually open to atmosphere to the corridor. And if you look in real closely, those are the chemicals on the, on the shelf. When we get to the stair, like I said, stairs have some issues. They're, the stairs themselves are very steep. The handrail is not continuous at the middle post. The handrail's at the wrong height. There needs to be a guardrail that goes up higher than the handrail, and needs to go around. And the distance between these, I believe, is too short. So essentially, a fair amount of work just to bring... So essentially a fair amount of work just to bring the stairway up to current code. Handicap code requires in elementary schools, two handrails, one for adults and one for Handicap codes, basically if, if you have something projecting more than four inches off the wall, it needs to go all the way down to the floor because otherwise a person with a cane would not be able to feel it and could end up running into it. You can see, here's a door with a knob handle in one of the classrooms. This is actually, I plead, this is the, a door communicating to another room from the nurse's office. It might even be the bathroom, I'm not sure. So if any, any room should be handicapped accessible, it should be the nurse. And then here's just an example, and this is easy, just move this stuff out of the way, but basically if you're in a wheelchair and you're trying to get up at this door, you can't reach it because of the stuff in the way. So pay attention to that when you're going through a building, not just for materials, but you know, if, if something's designed that way where you can't get into it, the wheelchair has to be able to go up next to a door, reach it, and to be able to get the door past them before they pull through. Structure, I know there's been a lot of concern about the cracking in the walls and I, I think I've got an explanation of what's, what's going on there. The kindergarten addition basically wraps the last classroom of the first floor wing. And so what you're seeing right here, this piece that's a different material than on the other sides, is actually the old building. And then the, the scored block on the inside is part of that new addition. So what, what's happening is the old building, which comes out like a T, is pushing its way through that wall. It is expanding and contracting in this direction. So when it gets cold, it shrinks. When it gets hot, it pushes forward and it's creating that crack where it's moving between. There's no force of nature that's gonna stop that. If you can design, it's a T like this, it's always gonna push through. So what we do now is we cut this and fill it with some foam and ceiling. And so it's a crack that we control. So you can see that it's moving, we know there's a crack that looks really ugly, it's not meaning the building's fallen down, it's meaning that the wall was designed improperly. Over here is the example of the, let me show you, sorry. That is a piece of plywood. Down over here, just another example of a door cracking. Well, what's happening is that there's a lack of control joints throughout the building. And when you have a long, narrow piece of material like this, meaning a large, but narrow material going the opposite direction, this one's moving, this one's moving, and a crack forms in, at a V off the corner of the door. That's, it's actually a fairly common thing to happen and it's avoided by well-placed control joints. The mechanical systems, well, there's some pretty obvious reasons why the heating doesn't work in some rooms. They're completely covered over with stuff. There's, there's no heat coming up because the, the boxes are falling onto it. Almost every classroom had stuff piled on, on the heat. You have situations where the ventilation, and there are fans and ventilators in, in the classrooms, but they're, they're covered over. I, I saw some that I had to like pull the boxes out of the way so I can, I could even stand. This one's really interesting. It's a unit ventilator, this one up in the, this corner, it's a unit ventilator. One third of it is in this room, one third of it is in the next room. They built the wall right on top of the unit ventilator. So if it's not functioning properly, I mean, that's a pretty obvious reason why. This right here is a control valve and release valve for pressure on, on the pipe. If the system were to go awry, it would get extremely hot. And so to have that actually sticking out under the radiation in a classroom is dangerous. It should not be there. Of course, it's part of the whole control system that's, that's not really working well right now, but that's, that's a hazard, that's a, it's definitely a hazard. Plumbing, as I was saying about the plumbing, I didn't find any necessarily deficiencies with it, except that the age of some of the sinks, you know, these are just getting to the point where you, you know, it's been used so much, you can't clean it. You know, the, these sinks on the bathroom walls seem fine. You know, I noticed that's a definite lack of mirrors in there. I guess they weren't treated well or something. And, you know, this is okay, but we're required to put privacy screens between toilets now. It used to be in, back in the day, you know, we just figured the kid's gonna rip off the wall anyways, we wouldn't put them on. But that's proven not to really be effective, that, you know, kids need some, some sense of privacy when, when they're going to the bathroom. And you probably need something for a screen. The wiring, some examples of what I was saying, this outlet right here is absolutely toast. And I found now three or four similar to that. There's been some modifications over time that simply haven't caught up with finishing it or correcting it. Here's an example of, you know, multiple plugs into, I mean, just wires everywhere. Again, I'm not following the teacher, they're doing what they can with what they've got. This is an example of a, of a light fixture. It's been upgraded, but it's, the, the lens is cracked and yellowed and in rough shape. Again, technology, doing what we can do, but not even played over it and plugs and then tape. And then this was a favorite of mine, basically, I think that was in the nurses too. It's a transformer, electrical transformer, and now we're using it as a night table. You know, there's, there's a lot of voltage going through that. This was really meant to be a closet and now we're, we've got, we've got people in And this, to me, this is actually probably one of the more concerning pieces and it's, and like I said, you know, a lot of people will think, well, finishes are just simply, you know, just put new floors down or whatnot. But when it comes to the health of the kids, I think it's one of the more important things. We need to have decent quality finishes. And I also think that it helps in just the overall feel of the building. I worked on a school in Wilton, it was about the eight, yeah, eighteen ninety-two. And we didn't change a lot in the rooms, but once we painted it, everybody came in and said, I had no idea this room was this beautiful. You know, so I think just, you know, the finishes are so important just from mental perspective, but also from a physical health perspective. So what do we've got? We've got, well, I showed you the sink earlier, but what's important here is all the chipped plastic laminate that's coming up bottom of it. This, I believe, was actually in the nineteen eighties wing, so it's one of the newer sinks and counters and plastic laminate is literally just delaminated. This, this areas where the, where things are just, just plain falling apart. And then our, our, our second floor tiles that are cracked and broken. I could have put in a dozen more pictures of tiles throughout the building that were cracked and crumbling. And then this kind of blew my mind that, you know, the, underneath the cabinets, they didn't bother containing the tile. So it's just plain plywood. You cannot, you can't clean it, you just can't clean it. But they had cleaner down there, stored underneath the, underneath the sink. And then another one that kind of bothered me a bit, was kind of hard to see in this picture, so I had to blow up here as well. These little colored areas are splinters. You can see it right here. Get a little closer. There are splinters as big as six inches long in the doors. And it's not one door, it's all the doors on the second floor. They, they should be replaced like a unit. So anyways, that's, I believe, the last slide. So I can, put this down and turn on the light. Do you have any questions now?
Yeah, it's in the millions.
Are you going to steal the grades on the quiz?
I was worried about that.
Well, that was awful.
I'm sorry.
Well, do you have the plans, the old plans that was done in two thousand and eight or two D?
Yes.
Would you, with all your knowledge, change that around?
Well, so a little bit of background with me is that I had my own company for fifteen years and was competing with Warren Street School Products. And so, so would I take those and, and, you know, change them a little bit and bring it back to you? I might, or I might have some other.
Fresh ones.
Fresh ones. What I think that's important here is, in, in my fifteen years of, of working on my own and, and, and the previous fifteen years before that, working for other firms that, that specialize in schools, I learned that teaching styles has changed. Back in the fifties, we had sort of a Henry Ford mentality when the school was built. You had a corridor, you put classrooms on it, kids came in, went out, in one end and exited the other end educated. You know, it was just very industrial. Now it's more networking, that teachers collaborate, kids collaborate. We've seen team teaching become more popular. We've seen learning communities with teachers become more popular. You can educate using learning communities in, in a school like this, but it's so much easier if you have a school that's actually designed for it. What you do is you take the classrooms, instead of having them on a long, arched corridor, you break them into groups where those teachers can come together and you have common spaces, open spaces that are communities for the kids and the teachers. And they're not necessarily assigned to be anything, you know, whatever they want to be. And I find it thrilling and a lot of fun to go back to the schools I've designed and seeing these spaces just filled with stuff and used all the time. One time I went in and there was a group of teachers that were sitting in the middle of the common space and they were having this big discussion and they saw the torque coming through and they scattered, they scattered away really fast, like they were doing something wrong. And I'm thinking, this is exactly what I, I had hoped for, is to create space for teachers to use on a, what's the word for a, ad hoc basis. You know, to be able to, to, to be creative and to do whatever you want. And each grade, each, each block would have something new going on, it was always different. So that's the kind of, of newer style of education that's just difficult in, in, in a design like this. So when you think about, you know, the choices that you have, if you were to build new, I would, I don't think I'd ever go back to either one of my designs or one of Warren Street's or anybody else's. I'd sit down with you folks first and find out what's important to you. If learning communities is not important, let's not go there. If something else is more important, if daylight, daylighting is, is huge in the industry right now. What we're finding, there's been a lot of studies, particularly out in California, saying that natural light increases test scores, electric rate, light decreases it. So if we can increase the amount of natural light in a, in a classroom, and like I said earlier, it's not just adding more windows, it's which polar exposure argue, is it north facing, south facing, east, west? The height, the depth that it gets into the classrooms, even skylights can have a positive benefit.
They're doing that in the corporate world too.
And they're doing it in the corporate world. Target put skylights in a bunch of their stores and then studied it and found that they were selling more goods out of those stores than they were before they put them in. You know, so it, it's definitely happening.
That was in depth, I like that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Surprises?
No. No whatsoever. It's like find land and build a place.
I am a little disappointed about the kindergarten. I, you know, I believe there's something positive, something in that building, you know, there's not a lot. I was also surprised that you said that the administration, the offices, you felt were adequate?
The size.
Oh, the size, okay. Cause I thought, I, I don't think they are.
Oh, from, from a finishing standpoint, you, you go in, you go by the assistant principal and principal's office and then there's a water heater sitting in the middle, they're, they're bringing it there. I mean, that's just, that's, that's awful. But yeah, just in terms of the gross square footage, it was big enough. And the location was eh? You know, if I were to design a, a school right from scratch, generally I like to put the, well, first of all, it starts with the, the main entrance. It has to be very obvious. And it can be the only place that anybody's coming. Because once, just like what you have right now, if you come in the front door and that vestibule's locked, you do not go anywhere without checking the windows of the administration first. But after hours, you'd be able to wander with the gym and the calf in the back. So, you know, what I would do, what I've done in schools in the past is to have the administration and the gym and the calf right behind you. And then the classrooms are in wings off of that, can be in both directions. And so that way, you come to the center of the school, the principal now has equal access and supervision on all the school. They're in the center of it, instead of being off in a wing someplace. So if there's something, something happens in that building on, on the second floor, the principal's got a distance to go. So by putting the, the principal's office in the middle and then designing the, the security system around that, I think is a much better, a better way of doing it. Put the, put the calf in the ship right in the front.
Yeah, not like all the walls. I'd be able to have, see out, and right now, they kind of see out.
Absolutely. And, and that's, that one of my, my criteria on here is visibility from the, from the principal's office and it is, it is pretty bad. But how do you put, again, how do you put a value to that?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But if we're doing new, I, I would, I would show you how, how it was. You know, you were saying this was in depth and, and to me, it's, I'm just scratching the surface, there's so much we can go over. So we, we have some more strength to listen to me again, have it back.
You obviously mentioned location, can't do anything about that. And you mentioned five acres, and that includes the acreage that is really unusable, that hill, right?
Well, that's a ten acre site, but that other five acres is like a point in the ledge.
The, the state, the Department of Education requires five acres plus one acre for every hundred students for an elementary school. Buildable land, buildable land, so.
Buildable land.
Yeah, so you can't count the hill and you can't count how the.
So if you say, let's say we have four hundred students, roughly, that's nine acres.
Right.
Eighty-seven should have eight.
Right.
Would that, would that include?
The, the Department of Education gives waivers for that on a pretty regular basis. So it really comes down to case by case situation. So I wouldn't necessarily hang my hat on that being a problem. The bigger problem is, is that the lack of land is causing you to not have a parent drop off, it's causing you to not have adequate parking, it's causing you to not have play fields. Those are all big deals.
That's right.
The school I did in Wilton was on two acres, it was four hundred students. But it had a public park right in front of it, it was a play field. And it had a very good car and bus drop off separation. We were able to accomplish everything on two acres. And so that, you know, that's not a problem. So it's not the, the size, it's more of a guide. If you don't have the space, you're just not gonna be able to do your work. So I, still preliminary, wanted to get a sense from you, you know, I'm currently tracking. You know, I'm currently tracking the numbers and I've got a lot, but I don't have any dollar values on them. But I do have some that I do. My current total is up over six million. And that includes doing the library as an addition. It does not include, again, it's, can be scenario-specific. If you decide, yes, we want to do major addition, then I have to start looking at adding the seismic, structural design, snow loading structural design, and other issues like that. So I, this is not a, I, I'm hesitant to throw that number out because you know how it happens, it becomes that number. And I don't want that to happen. But I also don't want to leave here and you folks thinking that it's a two or three million dollar project. The needs of this building are significant.
Well, the other issue would be, if, if we were to put money into this building, what are you going to do with the students?
Right. Because there's not a part of it that doesn't get touched.
Right, and I don't see any place in this community with the students and the staff, whatever. I mean, the money would be astronomical, because if you go over that sixty percent, getting a renovation, and you have to bring the whole building up to code, I mean, you do also figure there that were already on the high end of the scale. It doesn't make sense to renovate. And I'm not so sure about it being coming anyway when we renovate.
It might be, yeah, well, that's a discussion with the state. The last new school I built was in New Ipswich. It's the High Bridge Hill Elementary School. It's for four hundred and fifty students and it was sixteen million, and that was a bond vote in two thousand and nine. So that's eight years old. Inflation spend, well, back then inflation was almost zero. But it's crept up to almost five percent. My quick guess at this point is that same building would be somewhere around twenty to twenty-two million now. So. Just to give you a sense of what a new school would be. I could touch base with Jonathan on those last two plans and see what his tape would be as well. But that's just roughly the area you're in.
Yeah, well, we've got some other information on that potential site that we're looking at that-
It was a K-36, at New Ipswich.
K-4.
K-4.
Do you recommend any schools we should visit?
The High Bridge Hill Elementary School.
I'm sorry, over there?
The High Bridge Hill Elementary School. It's at New Ipswich.
Oh, it is, okay.
A little bit of a haul for you folks, but I think that you appreciate the way that the building's designed for their style of teaching. It has the, the pods looking into a common space. It's designed around learning communities where the teachers co-teach and collaborate in team teach. So it's kind of a tour force of all the things that I've learned about good quality educational design.
When we were looking at designs before, we looked at the pods and the community teaching. That was very high on our list to do.
If you're at all interested in it, I'd highly suggest seeing that school.
Thank you.
Yeah, so far as if you want a tour, I can set something up.
Any other questions from the board? Or anybody else for Adam? Crystal?
I wouldn't even know where to start. Maybe doorknobs?
I am trying to tailor the study to look at high, medium, low priorities that way. What's the first year that really has to be done right away? And it's a pretty big number. And then try and follow it up and spread it out over several years. So, you know, basically, if it's six million dollars, you know, if you get four years, figure on spending a million and a half a year for the next few years.
The splinters were the number one, Crystal, I'll help you out on that, get on that.
So yeah, we should probably talk, you know, if you guys didn't want me valid for a follow-up interview that I kind of would like to have down with you and just have to kind of go through this.
Yeah? Can we write pictures of the school up? How far away is New Ipswich?
Is it available to you somewhere?
Oh, somewhere.
You actually want to take a flight and break it before you just-
Yeah, our in-depth discussion.
We'll see where New Ipswich is. I don't even know. Did we ever, we never played that far.
What if they're caged for us, one hundred?
Eighty-nine. Sounds familiar, that's a-
Yeah.
That's not an emergency system.
No.
No, it's western.
Part of KSR?
It's like indoors box, when you start opening that building up and looking at-
And take two and a half hours.
Two and a half hours?
Two and a half hours.
Go down any malls around, we go to Nashville.
Oh, is it before Nashville?
That is near Nashville, isn't it?
It is, it's on purpose.
That's why I know. I know I said that.
It's down eighty-nine, you said?
Um, well, no, you can, you can go down ninety-one to eighty-nine and go down, but it looks like the fastest route is right down ninety-three. And then bust it over to seventy-seven.
Geez, I'm going to bust.
Yeah, we need to go to Boston.
Okay. This whole report is what I was talking about with that. You know what's disheartening is all the money we put into that school over the years and still got all those things. What's that tell you? That you can keep putting money into that, you're going to have the same reward. Exactly.
Lipstick on paper.
All that, what she said. That's a beautiful story.
It is beautiful.
What is the name of it again?
The High Bridge Hill, High Bridge, yeah, if you go to like Messineck.org, that website, right there. That was like, you say that was the K-34? This is a K-34.
That's Messineck?
It's Messineck, we're even here.
That, okay, they were part of the same bond issue that we had for the CTC.
Oh, okay, ah. I swear that name sounds so familiar to me, that might be because it's down near Nashville.
So if you go to Messineck, you actually have to go into Massachusetts and then come back.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, you do? You go to a Red Sox game, you go to that part. When we were talking before about buildings-
Well, the high school is south of the, I don't remember mine, so.
Does it show like the grounds or what?
Twenty-three seventy. Seventy-ish.
Who watched the Super Bowl yesterday? You want to buy it?
Oh, yeah, we're Eagles fans, so.
You're Eagles fan?
Oh, yeah.
We're kids, you want to?
We are.
Well, that should be interesting.
I know.
No, it gets standby.
My son's already a little upset because the girl he's got a crush on is-
Kathy's a jagwalk.
Anti-Eagles.
Then I would begin to think that's not eating it. We had a jagwalk poster up and Patriots won. So when the game was over, we took the other one down, quite a ceremony. Wayne Morrell was up on the ladder, taking the poster down. Well, we have a-
I think we're in quite a special outfit.
Where did, where did this outfit from?
Comfort.
Oh, comfort, okay, well, that would make sense, orange shirt.
Did you have it yet? Anybody on the phone?
Not yet.
Oh, not yet?
Do we need to finish up the principal reports, do we, like, we didn't get, we didn't see? Or are we just going to skip over it?
Let's go, let's, I think we only have Dale's to do.
We have Dale and we have Crystal.
Now she did, it's very short.
Oh, that was it.
Let's do Dale's report and then, I'm thinking that we don't have anything for personnel tonight.
Not that we're going to bring you that.
And nothing on facilities. And our next policy meeting is this Wednesday at nine o'clock.
Holy smoke.
Do you have a report?
I do.
Okay, well, let's do Dale's first.
Any questions about the pictures or video that I told you?
Yeah, I could figure out what it was, it was awful.
So that's just since the last report. But also, as you know, he started to allude to, he wasn't sure of the conditions of the roof. So we had multiple leaks on that two Fridays ago. Primarily on that roof that was infrared surveyed in two thousand and fifteen that didn't have any damage. It was supposed to be replaced, correct me if I'm wrong, Crystal, it was originally discussed to be replaced. But after that study came back in two thousand and fifteen, it was elected not to.
Yeah, because at that time it didn't have any leaks in it, right?
Not according to the report, and it didn't have, the infrared didn't pick up any wet spots or any issues, but it obviously does have some leaks, as you can see from the video. And then just, I just listed a few things that the custodial staff has been doing at the high school for overall cosmetics. And then from the technology committee standpoint, we, and I shouldn't say we because I was with Train the day we were supposed to hold the meeting and Greg and Jen and Matt ran the meeting about us looking at our acceptable use guidelines policy and making some, we feel necessary changes so that it coincides with the behavioral patterns or discipline and how technology would fit into that guideline. And currently, our, there is no specifics in our acceptable use guideline. If a kid violates the use of technology, there's no, you lose your privilege for a week, a month, there's nothing. So that's something that we just started a few Mondays ago discussing. Hopefully, we'll bring something back to the board in the springtime.
Anything else, folks, before we get started on the project?
I'll give it, yeah. Just to, just to get to talk about student-teacher ratio, this has come up a few times. I sent some information out to you all, this is information we've looked at at other junctures too, but looking at current staffing, Lake Way projected averages, where, you know, our class sizes are somewhat smaller than the state average, not a whole lot. If you start looking at that, some are even a little larger than the state average. So we're not all that far off. We start looking at these numbers, you get a little all over the place. Because sometimes when you start looking at student-teacher, student-teacher ratio, you're including just classroom teachers. In this case, this chart that I shared with you, those are just average class sizes, that's different than student-teacher ratio, which takes in all other, all teachers in the building. Special education, Title I, librarians, and so on, so on. So I think, and again, I think some questions have come up at some of our public meetings regarding, well, why, why is this ratio this way and that way? And they're because of they're managing different things, we have to be really careful with that. So I did, I looked at a few other things, I did look at some comparisons. So you get, looking, thinking about the comparison term of K-12, our K-12 student-teacher ratio is nine point one. Well, I've been saying, no, it's ten point two, right? Well, the nine point one is based on average daily membership. That does factor in the attendance on a given day. Ten point two references the actual number of students we have enrolled. And of course, that number changes a little bit too, but again, you have to be really careful when you make sure you compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges, the same, you start talking about these numbers. So I looked at a few other K-12 student-teacher ratios. North Country, I also looked at some across the state, but I'll, again, reference those in North Country. We're at nine point one, Lynn Woods at seven point three, Bethlehem seven point seven, granted, that's an elementary. Profile eight point one, Colebrook eight point five, Lisbon eight point eight. Then Littleton nine point one, so all of those I mentioned actually have, you know, fewer students per teacher than we do. Some of the, some of the schools that are somewhat our contemporaries, at least geographically, do have a few more students per teacher. The Widen, Widen Regional is nine point six. Gorm ten point two, Conway eleven, and Berlin eleven point six. So there's some variation, you go around the, you're in the state, you get into the large, more urban-type districts, the student-teacher ratio is definitely larger. But you'll get into, you'll find some schools that where that's also smaller because of other factors as well. So just a little bit of that, probably something that's going to continue to come back from time to time and it's probably worthy of our, of our attention. And again, I point out that the student-teacher ratio at Lake Way and the high school did change slightly from last year just because of the lower numbers of staff members, the result of the sort of budget actions that we took. Just again, I'd like to talk about the big three, composite-based education, universal design for learning, socio-emotional learning. We continue to do work on these areas. We met today with some of our administrative team to talk a little bit about CVE and how we're working to report student progress, how we, how we keep track of how students are doing. We'll continue to work on that going forward, because we're making enough progress now in getting, getting the competencies and the indicators put together that we need to make sure that we have the technology that we need to support that. And then finally, I was honored to, on Friday night, to attend the Project Impact graduation over at the Opera House. We had six students, Littleton High School students, that were honored through that ceremony and there was five students from the Regional also who joined us and were part of that ceremony as well. And Project Impact, and Kelly can tell you a lot more about Project Impact than I can, but it's a, it's a, it's a program that combines some community college work with some community-based work, along with some continuing coursework at the high school for some senior students. Did I capture the essence of it?
Yeah, I presented to the board on it
Yes.
in the past, but it's sponsored through vocational rehabilitation, so.
Very nice.
And we had how many students?
We had, we had, we had six, we had five in-
We had five in this school.
The Regional had six, yeah, had a little switch, but, so that was a nice experience. Well, that's all I have.
Okay, so who's going to call it in? You want to use the phone? Or you want to use mine?
We got all kinds of phones over there.
We got lots of phones.
Oh, okay. What are we doing? Here we go.
Here we go. Uh, we stick them on.
Hello?
Hi, Jim.
Hi, Steve, how you doing?
Very, very good. Guys, guys, about, uh, 15 of your closest friends are joining you now. Gang's all here. We just, we just finished up the architect's report, so I'm gonna lay the phone right here on the table, or hopefully, you can hear us and we can hear you.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
So, I just wanna say that in light of the recent advisory budget committee's vote, which they voted of our operating budget, six to nothing. They voted in favor of our support staff warrant article, five to zero to one abstention. They recommended not to vote for the LTA warrant article, zero to six. They also decided they didn't wanna vote, recommend to vote for the school facilities maintenance fund or the replacement of equipment fund. So, there's three articles that you're against. So, with that in mind, over the weekend, I'm about post and cuts. Not that it will help with the LTA article, however. My, I've shared this with the board, I don't know if they've had time to read it, I just gave a copy over here. First of all, remove $60,000, uh, from the operating budget for the LHS gym repairs. Remove $24,000 for the two unit ventilators. Okay. Uh, also thinking of reducing the Lakeway K-6 field trip by $5,500. And I understand that perhaps maybe FOL would help you with that if you needed. Thinking about reducing seven to 12 field trips, maybe by $5,000. Thinking about reducing tuition LEAs by $4,000. That would still provide us with four seats at the North Country Chatter Academy. Um, looked at reducing the gifted and talented. Um, last year's budget, budget was $16,000. And I kinda look more at the tuition area, because I know that some students go perhaps to St. Paul's or Christian Morton's, whether it's smart. I have no idea how many students we've sent there in the last two or three years. So, I don't know if that can be cut, but I'm throwing it out. This, what would provide is a potential reduction, A through E, as I've numbered it on my paper here, of $98,500. That would bring up proposed operating budget, if my figures were right, because I had to do this two or three times, $16,545,500, which is about $122,834 less than the default budget. My second thought was to, the replacement of the equipment capital reserve fund. Place $50,000 from surplus into this rainy day fund. Heard that before? The current projected balance of the equipment capital reserve fund, after taking $82,500 for authorized projects in 2017 and 18, that's this current year, is $50,987.40. That's what we've taken out of it. Also, I would propose to take four unit ventilators out of this capital reserve account for the sum of $48,000 for next year, leaving the balance in that fund at $10,987. So, if we ask the community to provide us with $50,000 of surplus, if that's what we have at the end of the year, it would bring that fund back up to $60,000, $61,000 roughly. Not much, but. And then the facilities maintenance capital reserve fund, we were talking about placing the $30,000 into this from surplus. That current projected balance, after taking $50,000 for authorized projects in this year, the balance of that is $138,000. If we were to add the $50,000, no, $30,000 back into this fund, if the article passed, that would leave us with $168,000. I have a couple of the notes here. We could potentially take $13,000 from the facilities capital reserve fund for the Washington Street roof replacement, which is $13,000. So, that would leave us in that account $125,000. Now, I don't know if we're gonna get any money from the governor's infrastructure fund, um, because we may have to use money from this account to replace stairs at Lakeway, and some other things that the fire chief mentioned in his report. Or do not fund the facilities maintenance funds with $30,000, leaving the current balance at $138,000, and removing this article altogether. So, with that being said, if my figures have been correct, if we remove at least $60,000 for gym repairs and $24,000 for unit ventilators, we would be reducing the proposed budget at this point in time by $84,500. Um, that would bring, I think, the proposed budget down to $16,554,500, with the default budget being at $16,663,334. So, that's my thought, so chime in. Did you get that, Jim?
I got it, thanks, Ann.
Okay.
The $60,000 for gym repairs was for the ceiling, right?
It, it's for that, pretty much what it was for. Yeah, for the gym and taking out the sliding panel. There's a slide anymore, so I want to.
All that, yeah.
It's kind of a, yes, we need to have it done, but it's an aesthetic repair, so I'm not sure we can afford it at the moment. I do know that we're gonna probably, that's a good question, that Kyle brought up about the unit ventilators. But we need them, for now.
So, what you're doing is you're removing the $24,000 for the unit ventilators, two of them, but you're getting it from somewhere else.
Well, what I'm doing is proposing to take four, because I understand we need more than two.
Yeah.
To take four of the unit ventilators.
From another source.
Uh, the equipment fund.
Yeah, okay.
Instead of incorporating.
So, you're still getting your unit ventilators.
Right.
But you're now going to get the repairs for the gym, so that's out.
Yep.
On your proposal. You're still getting the ventilators. What's out also are the field trips?
Well, I'm thinking about that, because, you know, I look at the field trip lines and, you know, some are used and some are not.
Okay.
It's kind of. Okay, tell me. Real quick, I think, once you want me to look it up.
No, probably not. I'm just, I'm trying to, I, you played with some figures here, trying to help the situation, I get that, thank you for that, but I just trying to figure out what's really gone and what.
Nothing is gone at the moment. We have whatever we had last week with the budget committee.
Yeah, okay.
So.
And how many kids did we send to, uh, St. Paul's or, do you know that?
That would be, guidance would know, I don't have that.
We sent two a year.
You've been sending two.
We have sent two.
Each year?
Yes, the last two years, we've sent two a year.
And that was reduced to $10,000 in this year's budget, too.
Yeah.
It's having quite a bit higher.
So, how much is St. Paul's?
It's, it's approaching $6,000 a year.
Yeah, I was gonna say five.
Yeah, it's over between five and six.
Well, I think there's different criteria for St. Paul's, so it's not been used the same way every year. Some kids take it for themselves and some kids get a scholarship, right?
Right, we, 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 over the years, we tried to meet, uh, the unmet need. So, if they receive scholarships, we would help them. Obviously, if they received scholarships from St. Paul's, we would meet it. So, it depends on, depends on their, their family's personal.
Right.
How many applications there are, that kind of thing.
I know, I think we can do the first two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm on the, I'm on it.
Yeah, I'm on it. I think we want to get to look.
I want to take in, yeah.
Every line of the budget as well.
Are you asking us for a vote on this tonight?
Yes, ma'am, I am, because we have to post the warrant by Monday, and we gotta sign it by Thursday or Friday.
I, I.
At the Berry Leathers in Costa San.
I have a great comeback for that, but I'll say that I just think it's hard to digest. I'm just a little learn.
Any comments from administration?
Ma'am? So, I'm not gonna argue to keep the gym in, but I, I would say that that money is necessary from Lakeway's standpoint, and I think Kyle backs it up with the unit ventilators. We talked about it at our facilities meeting. We have seven units that we can't control. Um, they're either all on or they're all off. So, I think cutting from the facilities account is not the, the best way, because those problems aren't gonna go away. Um, if we keep taking it away, I mean, my goal, and I hope our goal, is that we need to develop a five-year plan as to what we're gonna do in general. Um, but for my two cents, we, we work really hard at, at figuring out how to, how to cut, how to save, and how to address the issues that our, our buildings currently have. And Lakeway's issue's not gonna go away. If we take the money out, you replace four, you still have, uh, four that are gonna be left from the late 70s, early 80s. That, at some point, I mean, I, I would vote to keep the, the money in and change the verbiage that it's, it's strictly used for unit ventilators. And I, you know, I won't argue the point of the aesthetically pleasing gymnasium, but we have, we have other issues that I think we're gonna have to deal with sooner or later. And if you take it out of the general fund, it's gotta come from somewhere at some point. Um, and it doesn't, I don't perceive that our budget issues are gonna, um, improve next year or the year after that. So, every cut we make, next year, we're gonna have to fight even harder to get what we have. So, I respect where you're coming from and what you're trying to do.
No, no, that's not mine. The other thing is, we really, really, really need to get new links someplace, and it's not gonna be there, because I don't know where you're gonna put the students if you try to renovate that building. So, I'm pushing.
But, so, I, I kind of, yeah, well, I very much get what Dale's saying, but, um, I'm concerned too that the facilities is gonna be, I don't care that we don't get, I mean, I do care, but we have to designate what we're gonna do with it, that's one thing. But to just cut away from the facilities, I'm worried that the building that we now have, uh, that it's worth saving and it's worth keeping up. And I'm afraid if we don't have any money to do that, it's gonna end up like Lakeway.
I mean, we had a presentation tonight that tells us that one place we should be pulling money out is facilities, because that's where we, that's what's gotten us to where we are. We keep sucking money away for other things. I have opinions that I shared with you last week. I don't know if those should, if those were appropriate to share in public or not. But if you look back at what the budget committee's comments were, pulling money, pulling this money out of facilities and a few programs is not gonna satisfy them to approve our budget of what we presented, nor is it gonna satisfy them to approve our warrant articles.
I agree.
So, I mean, and, and Dale's right, you know, it's still in the budget, is the $60,000 for, for the gym repairs, but at the last board, at the last facility meeting, we, and Jim can attest to this, we took that same amount of money and pushed it over to unit ventilators, and we pulled the, we pulled the gym repairs right off the table.
Yeah.
So, we did just shift the dollars to embed it to a more important project. So, that's where I'm at evidently. I think we need, if we're gonna discuss my opinions beyond this, we probably need to do that in public.
Kim?
I'm kind of in the same mind, some of the things that I was, that have been discussed, it would be better suited for, for non-public. I guess what we need to determine now is if we're gonna pull these warrant articles out, though.
I mean, I can keep them all in just the same as they were.
Right.
I'm just doing some thinking. I'll just put you in pleasure. You know, and I know, I know we're gonna be putting a lot of money into Lakeway, and as, I understand we have to keep things safe and sound, but not where my heart is at. Jim, any thoughts over there? Hal?
Yeah, just listening to everybody's comments. Um, you know, a while back, we had talked about the priorities for facilities when it comes to investment, and we, we put three priorities on the table. One was safety. The second was education, and third was cosmetics. So, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, at least taking the, the gym cosmetics off the table as far as putting that $60,000 towards that. And, you know, when Greg and I in the facilities committee last met, we talked about shifting that $60,000 over to, um, the Lakeway line to buy the unit ventilators. And after talking with Terry, you know, there were more than just a few of them, there's quite a lot of them that are kind of on the top of the list now. And, you know, I don't know what the, the engineer said about Lakeway, but I think
How good.
From a budget standpoint, I agree with Dale. That we're gonna have to get used to spending a lot of money at Lakeway and facilities. And if we keep chopping things out for sake of, you know, a general budget, it may not really serve the purpose. You know, and Greg, what you said about, you know, satisfying, I don't know if chopping, you know, $50,000 or $60,000 out is really gonna satisfy the overall picture. So, you know, my thought is that if, if we're gonna leave, then warrant article on the table, um, it's gonna have to be something that we look at. Is we have to start, I mean, we gotta continue to make investments in our facilities regardless of what the budget looks like. And, you know, I'm thinking of leaving the two warrant articles to refund those capital reserves, but continue to use as much out of the capital reserves we can, so that people realize that we're not just trying to bankrupt rainy day money, but we're actually, you know, looking ahead. Like Dale said, a five-year plan to invest in our, our facilities. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the $60,000, I think, would be better served to buy four more unit ventilators, at least have them in line, and keep the facilities, uh, the $24,000 in that line. But some of the other things you mentioned, Ann, about cutting things out, I mean, if we can, we can. And if it doesn't affect the overall quality of education, you know, any of it's gonna help. Um, but I don't know if, if we could ever cut enough down to satisfy the budget committee.
Yeah, I can tell them look like we can.
Well, they, their statement was that they were in favor of our operating budget.
I know.
So, you know.
So, let's go with it?
So, let's go with it, because they're, they're not gonna be happy until we address the other issues. I mean, I think that's the bottom line.
We flatlined the budget.
Yeah, and, and we could, we can, and we should, go through line by line and say, okay, what exactly is this for? Do we absolutely need this? We have to be responsible in that way.
School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40, semicolon, 13, comma, 10, N16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. So I need a vote, folks. I read the article, so just, you going to move it?
Yes, I'll move the article as read.
Okay. Kim, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So we'll have to do a roll call vote on that, because you're on the phone.
Okay.
Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson. Millie Nelson.
Jim Hennan.
Ann Wiggott. Okay. Article three is the collective bargaining agreement support staff. To see if the school district will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the school board and the Littleton Support Staff Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. Fiscal year 2019 estimated increase is a negative $29,657. Fiscal year 2020, the estimated increase is $36,251. And further, to reduce the appropriations made in Article Two by $29,657 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional cost savings attributable to the increase in salaries and reductions in benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. Recommended by the school board, a new motion. So moved.
Second.
Greg. Kim voted, and Greg seconded, and all in favor with a roll call.
Greg. Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson.
Millie Nelson.
Jim Hennan.
And Ann Wiggott. Special meeting for defeated agreement. Shall the town, if Article Three is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Three cost items only. Recommended by the school board, I need a vote.
So moved.
Second. All in favor with a roll call.
Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson. Millie Nelson.
Jim Hennan.
Ann Wiggott.
Since that's a non-monetary article, do I need a vote from the budget committee?
No, you do not. Article five, collective bargaining agreement professional staff. To see if the school district will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the school board and the Littleton Teachers Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. Fiscal year 2019 estimated increase is $178,395. Fiscal year 2020 estimated increase is $161,019. Fiscal year 2021 estimated increase is $151,331. And further, to raise and appropriate $178,395 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional cost attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. Motion made by...
So moved.
Second.
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 One comment. The numbers in years two and three are less than you've seen previously. The longevity stipend only matters in year one. In year two, we were carrying all those numbers forward. Year two, it's just the additional one or two that go into year two, not those that go into year one. And in year three, also has the longevity stipend correction, and there's a reduction for the health insurance in year three. So these, year two and three are less than we've seen previously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So those, motion made by... Me. Millie Nelson. Millie Nelson, and second of Kim Woodson. A roll call vote. Greg is not voting, he's recusing.
Oh, that's right, Kim Woodson.
Millie Nelson.
Jim Hennan.
Ann Wiggott.
Greg Cook abstaining.
So recommended by the school board, four, one exception. Article six is special meeting for defeated agreement. Shall the town, if Article Five is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Five cost items only.
So moved.
Okay, second. Second. All in favor?
Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson. Millie Nelson.
Jim Hennan.
Ann Wiggott. Article seven, replacement of, have we got these in the right order? Yeah, the equipment is the last, right?
That's the last information you gave me.
Okay.
The order is which one you want to fund first if you don't have enough.
Okay, replacement of equipment capital reserve fund. To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the replacement of equipment capital reserve fund created May 24, 1984. This sum to come from June 30, fund balance available for transfer on July 1, no amount to be raised from taxation. Recommended by the school board, do I hear a motion to accept? So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson.
Millie Nelson.
Jim Hennan.
Ann Wiggott.
Greg Cook abstaining.
So recommended by the school board, four, one exception. Article six is special meeting for defeated agreement. Shall the town, if Article Five is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Five cost items only.
So moved.
Okay, second. Second. All in favor?
Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson. Millie Nelson.
Jim Hennan.
Ann Wiggott. Article seven, replacement of, have we got these in the right order? Yeah, the equipment is the last, right?
That's the last information you gave me.
Okay.
The order is which one you want to fund first if you don't have enough.
Okay, replacement of equipment capital reserve fund. To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the replacement of equipment capital reserve fund created May 24, 1984. This sum to come from June 30, fund balance available for transfer on July 1, no amount to be raised from taxation. Recommended by the school board, do I hear a motion to accept? So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson.
Millie Nelson.
Jim Hennan.
Yeah. Did you just vote Kim? Yes. Okay, Ann Wiggott. Okay. Article eight, school facilities capital reserve fund. To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be added to the school facilities capital reserve fund created March 16, 1993. This sum to come from June 30, fund balance available for transfer on July 1, no amount to be raised from taxation. Recommended by the school board, motion. So, second.
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson.
Millie Nelson.
Jim Hennan.
Ann Wiggott. Okay, I guess we're done.
I'll have to check now.
What?
Also, in front of you, I can send the copy of Jim, you've got a draft of the MS-26, just a budget form that will be posted. On page four, the individual warrant articles. DRA system will not allow a negative appropriation. So I had to put in a $1 increase for the support staff, and now I have to manually adjust this page, so that we can come down to the total appropriation. All adds up manually. So that's something that I have to do with 26 before we post it.
Okay.
And before you sign it. And you also have the extract of the default budget.
Yes.
Which is, as we've seen, just a little different. We actually go into more detail in the presentation that you gave.
Do you have that other dollar here, those dollar articles? Remember?
That wouldn't be in the default budget.
Okay, but it's in the regular budget.
The 16, yes, we added a 1,600 line.
Okay.
For adult ed or continuing ed, and applied $1 to it, just so we've established the account, and essentially warning, if you will, that there may be a new purpose.
Okay.
So if next year you choose to use that, we can use that. But that is not included in the default budget, because it did not exist in this year's approved budget.
Okay.
And I don't have a contractual obligation yet, so...
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is great. All right.
So we'll finalize all these, they go to Department of Revenue and to Gordon Graham.
Okay.
And I'll give you all phone calls when we have something back.
So Jim, are you going to be home by, on Friday?
I'm actually coming home on Sunday.
Okay, fine.
Could you stop in Monday morning, please?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, early, Pat, he says.
I'll get it to you.
Did you mention the work session?
Oh, yeah, he knows about the work session. We are going to have a work session. Yep.
Monday at 5:00.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ann.
All right. Thank you, Jim. First join in.
You're welcome. All right. Good night. Okay.
Come back to you, I'm going to kill him.
He's in Florida.
I need a motion to go into non-public, please.
Make a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the RSA 91A, colon, three of the right to know law four, matters that adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Taking with us superintendent.
Person needs to come in.
Lakeway Elementary School principal.
Second, Jennifer.
Jen, you need to come in.
Jennifer Carbonell, high school principal. And Tom Ainsley, business. And Patty.
Do we hear a second? Second.
Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson. Take a long time. Millie Nelson.